This.
We welcome you to the September twenty twenty three. Meeting of the White Lake Township Library Board Trustees. All the meeting to order. Now, let's begin with the. The allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And. One minute. Under God. In His level. But there were good interests for our.
Roll call.
Okay, Jake Hall. Um, like President Richard Blue.
Present.
Treasurer Guan Lian.
Present.
Secretary Jake Duda here. Trustee Karen Weins.
Present.
Trustee Eric Shawwell, present. We have, uh, joining attendance by Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen. Uh, President Jennifer Schultz is absent, excuse me.
Okay, uh, we'll begin, uh, with the. Approval of the agenda, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
We'll oppose, the eyes have it. Okay. Moving along, we have. Public comment. Everybody, public comments? If they want to publicly comment, nope. Okay. Okay, we'll move then on to presentations. Uh, Emily. You're up first. You're gonna give us a summer reading program wrap up? Awesome.
Also, this video. Heather made a very fun video for us. Uh, definitely. This is.
That was so cute.
A nice documentary.
All right, summer reading wrap up for twenty twenty three. Bring over the challenge, the stats, the programs, and looking forward. To be challenged, so this summer, we participated in CSLP's Summer Reading Challenge. The theme for this year, it was all together now, we're celebrating kindness, friendship, unity, and community. We had five different challenges, babies through kindergarten, first through fifth grade, sixth through twelve adults, and then we also did a staff challenge this year, just for fun, please. Some stats. Here's everything our readers accomplished this year, so let's say we have the five different challenges. We have four hundred and ninety eight active readers this summer who were actively logging their reading in Bean Stack, and five hundred and thirty eight signed up for the challenge. Nine thousand two hundred and forty six books were logged during the challenge, our babies through kindergarten track exclusively through the numbers of books that they read. Seven hundred and thirty nine thousand seven hundred and sixty seven minutes were read. The other four challenges tracked their minutes and hours for reading. Uh, Dublin Elementary is our most active school with eighty eight readers, followed by Lakewood Elementary with forty five, and our local school community had forty three. Four hundred and seventy five out of those five thirty eight were White Lake residents. Two hundred and eighteen readers completed the entire challenge, there was different goal set for each completion, we probably hope to create a second. One thousand and twenty three rewards earned across all challenges, nine hundred and twenty nine of which were redeemed and picked up. And the largest group of new registrations outside of the adults reading were second readers around age seven.
Nice.
So bringing it down, overall, the babies through kindergarten earned two hundred and sixty two rewards, first through fifth, four hundred and eighty nine. Our teens, sixth through twelfth, two oh six, and adults were sixty six. By challenge, we had ninety readers for babies through kindergarten, one hundred and ninety nine for first through fifth. Hundred and four, sixth through twelve, one hundred and thirty two adults, which also kind of included the thirteen staff members that participated this summer. Their challenge completions. Fifty six babies through kindergarten, ninety two kids, seventeen teens, fifty one adults, and two staff members. So for babies through kindergarten, this was sixty books read over the summer. First through fifth was twelve hundred minutes or twenty hours. Six through twelve was six thousand minutes or a hundred hours, and the adults were twenty four hundred minutes or forty hours. Staff was six thousand minutes or a hundred. Lots of reading. Okay. So this summer, we also did our first annual thousand book celebration. We honored all those who have finished thousand books before kindergarten here at White Lake Township Library. Oakland County Parks and Rec came out, they had a bubble zone, bingo, tie dye station, we had music, popsicles. Bookmarks, and we also officially launched five hundred books before middle school and a hundred before graduation, which actively has the kids participating in it so far. There's just a couple pictures, our tie dye station, giant boat bingo in the back. That was hilarious. Then at the end of summer, we had our summer reading bash to celebrate summer. Uh, music, face paint, popsicles, bubble chalk, yard games from the idea lab, a couple food trucks. And Oakland County Parks came out again courtesy of a grant to bring a rock wall and inflatable obstacle obstacle course, which were very popular. We estimated about a hundred and fifty patrons attending, based on the number of popsicles. Uh, today was popular, the lemonade from the food truck was very good and popular, and the games from the idea lab and the toys we had out were a hit, they definitely checked out the day after. Here's the rock wall. And also, here are some super cool. The moving forward. The theme for twenty twenty four is adventure, CSLP's theme is adventure begins at your library. We've already started our script for a promo video, which you've seen this year and last year, they're a real hit. Uh, we're thinking of taking on a vintage, vintage national parks and road trip theme instead of using CSLP's, um, stuff, we think it'll be really good. Twenty twenty five is gonna be art themed, slogan is color our world. Twenty twenty six is dinosaur themed, and they just picked the slogan, just unearth a story, and they just picked the theme for twenty twenty seven, which is mystery detective themed, which I'm very excited.
Well, no, he's done a great job this summer.
Thanks.
They need to cover the board, also join the.
Oh, we should, yes. Oh, yeah.
Both our thousand books program and the end of summer one were fabulous, I was at both of them and. Wow.
They're very fun.
Emily did a lot of work on both of those things. I think about the first staff.
Yeah, it's primarily Oakland Parks, very glad we received that grant, we were able to get all of that stuff for free from Oakland County Parks and Rec. Looking forward to that next summer, Jim.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You have any, um. Comment on the relative. Uh, completion rate of adults in general, and then staff. As, as a comparison, there was like two out of thirteen staff completed and.
Maybe a whole lot more than we could.
They were pretty close, not all of the staff participated, we only had thirteen, we have twenty some.
Yes, but no, I'm saying is, is like, you, but you had two complete the challenge out of thirteen, and then the overall population, the participants and the completions were. Like more like fifty plus percent.
It's hard. I can tell you, I forgot to log every single minute that I did, so I'm sorry.
Hey, if you don't, if you don't log.
It doesn't count, it doesn't count, right?
Yeah, so I, I think not all of the, the staff, some of the staff were in the adult challenge as well, but not all of them were. Only a couple of them were. We're working.
Yeah. Well, we, we see the pictures that you're reading.
It's just me, just talking about students from work.
This is great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Emily.
Okay, I think we have a corridor improvement plan.
And Sean cannot, Sean O'Neill cannot, cannot make it.
I'm like, he doesn't look like Sean.
He has apologies.
Yeah.
If it's okay, I'm gonna stand right here.
That's fine.
So like, where you can be next to everybody, and because. I don't have this multimedia enthusiastic presentation, why do I get put behind, I want to get put next, you know, behind the, uh. Parks and Recreation Directors and the library people, all the great programs, I always like to follow the auditors, because I look excited. You know? It's still in April, I mean, I always love being at meetings when I have to, they say, oh, you know, you gotta be there tonight, and, uh. Then I sit there and they make me the audit, I'm thinking. Anyway, I'm Dick Carlisle. I'm a consultant that's been hired by the township to put together this corridor improvement authority for the township. If, see, by, we, I've been around a while, I've worked in Oakland County for forty years. With Independence, Springfield. You know, we work with Oxford, or a whole variety of communities in Oakland County, but we are based in the An Arbor. Uh, and we do a lot of this kind of work. Uh, economic development work, but we're actually. The core of our business is planning, we do planning consulting for a whole variety of communities, but this is especially the area of ours, and. When, uh. The township was considering resurrecting the corridor improvement authority, we were contacted and asked if we could. Uh, help, because we've done similar work for other communities in Oakland County. Uh, in two thousand and six, I'm doing this the old fashioned way, because I decided. Uh, really, because Sean, I thought Sean was sending a PowerPoint presentation. I found that tonight that.
This is.
Happened for, I was not feeling so wrong, but in the old fashioned way, you have a copy of here, and I'm gonna sort of highlight this, but then I wanna really point out the key things. That you, as a library board, district library board, you know, would be concerned about in this particular. When, when this ask is being made of you, and that's what this is, this is a request. Um. So, uh. The Corridor Improvement Authority Act was passed in two thousand and six. To give. Uh, particularly townships, but. Cities and villages also, the ability to establish an economic development organization. For. Uh, you know. The roadway corridors, which unlike cities and villages, that had downtowns as their major focus of economic development. Our roadway corridors in places like Waterford, Independence, you know, through Dixie Highway, M fifty nine, these were, you know, these were your, the equivalent of your downtowns from an economic development standpoint. Uh. This township took advantage of that in two thousand and six. And established a corridor improvement, uh, district. Prepared a plan. And then didn't, didn't proceed with it any further, didn't not pursue it any further after that point in time, so they never adopted the plan. So. Your court board has resurrected. The, uh, Corridor Improvement Authority. And. Adopted. Uh, the district was already established, but reestablished a new board. And then, uh. Set the funds aside. To have a plan prepared, which is what we are doing. And so we prepared this, you know, Corridor Improvement Authority Plan. For this, for the township. And it's been recommended for adoption by the Corridor Improvement Authority, which is a body appointed by the township board consisting of five representatives. The majority of which have some type of business interest in the corridor. And, uh. We've gone through that whole process of doing that, I think April, you were at the meeting, where the board, uh. So this is. In your presentation, you'll see. This is, this is what the district looks like. Now, it looks pretty large. It was the original district. That. Was adopted by the board in two thousand and six. But we have taken a different approach in terms of how. We're pursuing this. When you. Uh. When you adopt a corridor improvement district. You have a district, a development district, in which. You can capture. Uh, we have a development district in which you are going to make the improvements, that's the first part of it. Second part of it is, this district serves as the basis for establishing a tax increment finance district, which is the most important thing. To you. In terms of what we're talking about tonight. Uh, so this is the area that it covers. Um. The reason that the township board has established this is in order to make improvements. To the, to this part of the township, which is the major economic spine, basically, of the township. And, you know, the, the roadways that come off of it, such as Elizabeth Lake, which you are on, which is obviously an area that's improving, but we have other areas in the township. That need help. And. The reason that these, this type of authorities were established in the state of Michigan. Was to allow for. Uh, tax increment dollars to be captured. And reinvested. Only back in that district. In order to stimulate economic development. And in your particular case, we're not talking about vacant property, you're talking about redevelopment. Some properties that have essentially become. Obscure from that standpoint, they need to be redeveloped. So, um. The, uh. You know, so, so. The whole idea behind this is, is to implement projects that are specified in a plan. Which governs what the board can do. And, uh. The improvements may, the dollars may only be spent in that district, and you happen here to be in that district, for example. Um. And so the, the idea is, is to make various improvements within this district that will spur additional, uh, private investment in this corridor that will produce. More tax dollars. Now, from my experience. If you've established and helped many communities do that. These types of public investments, particularly in their infrastructure, do exactly what. They're supposed to do. Um. And we're very. Specific in this plan about that, in terms of trying to target. Those types of projects and programs. That will stimulate private investment. Uh, as I said, your board is, uh, it is a representative board, supported by county board, consists of township supervisors. And four of your individuals. The majority of them have to have, uh, some business interest in the district. And one resident must be, uh, one, excuse me, member must be a resident of the city, that is.
Of the city or within the district?
Of the. I'm sorry, must be a resident of the township, excuse me.
So they don't have to be a resident within that district?
They have to be, either within the district or within one half mile.
Okay.
Okay. Uh. And so the idea is, you've got, you know, you've got a fairly representative district from that standpoint, but it is governed really by the township board. In several different ways, one is that township board is the body that, uh. Approves their annual budget. Second. The board approves the plan that this board is, the CIA Corridor Improvement Authority has prepared. They have to approve the plan. And third of all, the township supervisor is a member by statute. By the law, is a member of the board, so that is sort of the next between your corridor, so it's just not an authority that has the ability to go off willy nilly, you know, spend money on things that they think, you know. But, uh. So. The board prepares a plan. CIA board prepares a plan, resets it to the township board. The township board considers that plan as to whether it is in, you know, in accordance with meeting the economic development objectives of the township, and more specifically addresses. The provisions of the state statute that allow. This community to establish a corridor improvement authority. So now we are in that process. We're in that process where the township corridor improvement authority is recommending a plan to the township board. And the various taxing jurisdictions, which I'll get into in a minute, that are subject to tax increment capture. Are, will be. Given an opportunity. To opt out. Of the capture. You are unique.
Yes, we are.
In the legislation, district libraries were automatically opted out.
Correct.
So you have the opportunity. Continue just as you are. Or opt in if you so choose, and that will be your decision.
So you say district libraries?
No, all libraries in the state of Michigan, as of, um, it was passed in two thousand and eighteen.
All libraries, all libraries.
Because library tax millage is expected to be used for library services.
Just responding to the.
Yeah.
Cause we have to district.
Um. So the concept behind the actual tax increment financing, the. You know, the township has chosen somewhat unique path here. Um. The whole idea behind taxing and finances is that no taxing jurisdiction loses any revenues. What they are currently. Uh. What they are currently generating, okay? So when the base year is established, which would be two thousand and twenty three. All the taxes that you're currently, that any taxing jurisdiction is currently receiving, you'll continue to receive. It's the incremental value that the increase, uh, in taxes is, that is, that is what is captured. And it can be varying levels. Uh. Most that I have seen are fifty percent. Some are even up to a hundred percent. White Lake Township decided that because of the size of the district. That what this plan recommends is thirty five percent. So what that means is. The. The Corridor Improvement Authority Tax Increment District. Will capture thirty five percent of the revenues, and the taxing jurisdictions will keep sixty five percent of the revenues in growth. Plus what they've already collected, so that's a little bit of a variation from what. You know, what I typically see from that standpoint. But it's also a large district from that standpoint. And all this is dependent on. You know, growth occurring in the district from new investment, so. Um.
So, could you run that again, so the, the.
Let me, let me, uh.
It's based on the growth of.
Yeah, let me share with you. What probably is a little bit better. Okay, I mean, this, this graphic in here is intended to. To. Help illustrate that concept. So. When you establish a tax increment district. You establish a base year when you adopt the plan. That happens to be two thousand and twenty three. From that point forward, whatever percentage of revenues that the plan specifies. That is the percentage of the growth in revenues that the tax increment district captures. So, as I said, it can be anywhere from zero to a hundred percent, or most, most cases is fifty percent. Some cases it's even more. In this case, it's thirty five percent. So you can see that. You, as well as all the other taxing jurisdictions, will retain your current base tax revenue. And sixty five percent. Of the retained. Uh, tax revenue over the base, in other words, the growth. In tax revenue. Thirty five percent will be captured by the tax increment authority to be reinvested back in the district. In. Dominantly projects, infrastructure projects that will benefit the district, so that, does that.
Yeah, okay, that makes that make sense, so, and you show it a twenty year, is that the?
Correct, it's a twenty year term of plan. Yeah. So what, what is, what is the township, you know, what, what is the township proposing, what is the Corridor Improvement Authority proposing to do? Uh, there's, they are, it's listed, there are a variety of sort of generalized projects. Uh. Gateway finding, gateway signage, and wayfinding. Wayfinding signage, in other words. One of the things that. We understand and we think is you get on M fifty nine. And you're trying to find where the, for example, where the library is, there's no way, you know, there's no. There's no identification from M fifty nine of any.
There is, but.
Well, I mean, yeah, exactly, so the idea is to, you know, is to provide a uniform. Township, and, and well, the other point is, if we'll still speak general about this, because this isn't just about the library, there's no. You don't know when you're in White Lake Township, or you're in Waterford, for example. You know, or, you know, Highland, for that matter, it all looks the same.
Well, it's pretty clear when you get to Waterford, because the sign laws are so different.
So is the Highland.
You would only know that though.
It's, it's. Yeah, obvious as you're walking.
The general public. So, you know, the idea is to create.
A Waterford sign, you should go to Water.
The idea is.
Right, but the sign laws are so different, it, it's, it's a completely different field.
Yeah, I hear that same thing. Me doing independence.
For sure.
But, but the boundaries are not real clear, so. One of the things is, you know, just creating some clearer documentation for the people, they're gonna bring in some notoriety, some branding and things like that, the second is, is to create some wayfinding, but direct people. To. You know. Public facilities that are, you know, located off the corridor. Unification. Uh. It's not very attractive, to be very honest, on fifty nine. And. Streetscaping, landscaping, various, you know, public art, you think of it, you know, things that could make this corridor distinctive, that attract a community to follow. Uh, non-motorized improvements, pathways and pedestrian improvements. The. Pathway system along M fifty nine is a disaster.
The, the, uh, the pathway along M fifty nine is, um. Stated. Uh, it's the township.
Not even a pathway in some cases, it's, it's paved shoulders.
Yeah, but.
Quite paved anymore.
But it's, um.
Try riding the bike on it.
Not control, not, the, the township can't do anything with that.
Well, but, but years, fifteen years ago, we passed a millage for, for, um, pathways, and, and the Parks and Recs never used it for that.
Right, right.
So for this corridor, since White Lake cannot touch M fifty nine, how do they propose to make a pathway to go along M fifty nine?
I don't agree with that.
That they can't?
Yeah.
Okay.
In fact, and, uh. Attitude. Uh, towards those things is completely different, those are not pathways, those are paved shoulders that you see in many areas.
Well, not if you put a green space and then it, then it's a, depending on how wide it is, depends if it's a sidewalk or a.
And generally, and generally, M dot will allow pathways within their right, right of way, so.
Cause there's a huge difference when you cross from White Lake into Highland.
Yeah.
You head into Highland and the path is beautiful all the way into Heartland.
I, and I think probably the right of way is a little bit more there too, probably, but yes, you're correct. You're correct, and that's the idea, is to separate from those shoulders to create, I mean, you do have some pathways, but it's disconnected.
It's very.
And then you see people walking on these paved shoulders, they're not maintained, they're ugly, they're harsh. And the idea is to separate that pedestrian traffic. The other thing is, is that, uh. You know. And that related to that is, is some. And that related to that is, is some form of transit is coming, you know, I mean, county millage has been passed, much to, you know, objection of some people. But it is there, and so we decided rather than, you know, uh. By that, to embrace it and to promote, uh, the fact that, you know, you are part of the, uh. WODA, West Spring Oakland Transportation Authority. And probably there will be eventually a, a fixed smart bus line down in fifteen hundred. So having transit stops. Is a. More friendly pedestrian environment is part of the plan. So that, you know, so that, again, the idea is to, you know, to be, be able to bring people from that. Heavily traveled roadway off the roadway to businesses, the libraries, to wherever, you know, to the township hall, or whatever to, 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 you know, wherever they need to go. And then there are, uh, other more normal infrastructure improvements to water and sewer.
Which we've already paid for. The library paid for the, the water to go all the way down past where the township wants to have their, um, their building. We were asked to pay for that when we built this building, and it was three hundred thousand dollars. That we didn't plan on paying.
All right. I, I'm just giving you the facts, I mean, just telling you what the.
But for the corridor improvement, we've definitely participated already with that, with putting the water in.
Well, you know, this is a decision that you have to make. And specifically. The, uh. The things that, uh. Are targeted towards Elizabeth Lake Road are, are pathways, completion of Elizabeth Road improvements, proposed, uh, transit stops. Pedestrian and non-motorized improvements to be able to provide people better access. So that is essentially what is included in the plan. Those are the projects that benefit the library. It's obviously, either way. I mean, I, whether you, you are an opt-in or an opt-out taxing jurisdiction when it comes to the corridor improvement authorities. The taxing jurisdiction has complete authority as to whether, as to what they choose to do. So that really is, is your decision from that standpoint.
For sure. Well, thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Uh, this was really good information.
If you have other questions in the community.
Um, if there are, um. Uh, village, um. Changes. Um, how is, um, is it? But they. It's a total revenue that, uh, of, that is grandfathered in, so if our total revenue is. Um, it's a million dollars today. Yeah, so if we, if our, if there's changes to the structure of mil- villages, if there's renewals, if there's replacements, if there's additional. The, the, there'd be a thirty-five percent on, of anything new, and there'd be thirty-five percent on anything that's.
Existing.
Existing, so.
Except debt.
Except that.
Let's say you decide to borrow to add onto the library, which you encountered, by the way, you have a beautiful place.
We do.
If you decide to borrow money for some reason, debt millage cannot be included in the capture.
Right.
However, let me also say that if you choose to opt in. Something that you can, uh, a condition of that opting in can be to enter into a tax, into an agreement. The law permits you, permits the corridor improvement authorities, put it that way, to enter into agreements with the taxing jurisdiction. That, uh. Are potentially limiting or defining or specific towards what you're willing, how you're willing to participate. So there are, there is an ability to control. Uh, or even establish caps, so there's the ability to, uh, establish. Uh, parameters to your willingness to participate.
Okay.
By agreement. And then, I mean, and that. That is extended, that the law extends that to all taxing jurisdictions, so it won't be just. Library, district library, we talked about, I mean, Oakville County, obviously, we've already been talking to Oakville County, that's a, a major source. Of, of tax capture equal to the township. Uh, it'll be. Many college. And here at Clinton, that's all authority as well as the library.
So, okay, so in. In some of our life experiences, we've seen. Yeah, um. We've seen, uh, you know, large inflation and the past twenty, thirty years have been. You know, pretty mild, but we, we've seen, you know, inflation in the double digits, um, for, for year upon year. And, um, and so. Um, you know, with inflation comes rising of, of prices and comes, you know, so the values go up. And so our, our income, but our, you know, our net. Uh, impact could be quite a bit more, um, than, uh, than. You know, a simple growth, because, you know, a million dollars in twenty twenty-three, uh. Won't, you know, in, in twenty forty-three, uh, that might be chump change relative, uh. Uh, to, to there, and so it could have a, a, a very large impact on our ability to operate, so.
For sure.
With some ability to maybe limit. Uh, you know, outside of just that one, um, number, because we, we don't know what the, the future will hold in terms of. You know, what, what the, the numbers will, will look like down the road, and, and, um, don't necessarily want to. You, you, you labor the, um, future boards with having to do, you know, uh, much without, without much.
Right, and I think that's one of the reasons the legislation went through in two thousand nineteen, Rich, was that, you know, most libraries are very limited in their millage. That they, that they're able to capture, and so they realized that, you know, there was this real push that libraries are to use what millages that they capture to, to actually. You know, support the community with library services and not to, you know, expand to other entities, so, so that was, that's across, that's across the state of Michigan.
Well, clear to your decision, and, uh.
I think there's a time, there's a timeline or a timeframe that we have to. Or, uh, or is that for the, because since we're an, an opt-in, um, versus.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of interesting, because I've, uh. I had a very interesting, um, project that I worked on in Washtenaw County, where that, the corridor improvement authority. Was in two library districts. And, uh, it was, is very interesting, one library district opted in, the other opted out, you understand. Um, but what I'm saying to you is that. And then, you know, again, nobody's here to talk you into anything, you, you, you're an independent body that makes your own decisions, but. If there are things that you see. That this library can benefit from. From the corridor improvement authority. This is, this is the kind of negotiation, and this is the time to be able to put them into a tax sharing agreement from that standpoint. So in other words, if you feel that there are elements of the plan. That would benefit the library, but you're a little unclear about. The commitment or the priority associated with that. You know, this, these are the things that can be identified in an agreement and put there, that, that is. A trade-off for whatever you agree to allow to be captured, so. You know, I, look. I totally get it, I, I worked, all I've done my entire forty years of my career is with the local government. But I will say this, that. All bodies ultimately, from betterment of the community, have to figure out some ways to work together. And if it, if it, if it's, if it, these kinds of things ultimately benefit you in your judgment. Or there are things that can be done that benefit you, this is obviously. An opportunity rather than a tax, you know, a revenue grab from that standpoint, it is all the same community, by the way.
Yeah.
But I understand, I heard these things, I've heard all these things already.
I'm sure you have.
I heard them before, you know, and, and, uh. But, yeah, different, you know, that leadership, you know, is different, and, uh, I think we'll have to sit down and. We'll discuss these things, but this is the information that you really need to start, that you, that you need to develop, and anything else that you need. Sean will ask me to prepare for you, or, you know, we'll, we'll, I, okay?
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much, yeah, your side, all right.
Thanks so much, good to meet you.
April, has the township already had their public hearing? Okay, and do we know when that is?
It's sometime in October.
No, it's not, yeah, it's not, it won't be, it's not going to be until the latter part of October.
Okay, and then we have sixty days after that.
And then, what you have.
We don't have to do anything if we choose not to, we choose not to opt in, we don't have to do anything.
Right, but if not, it's, it's a sixty day.
Unless we opt in.
Right.
We don't, we don't do it.
But I just, the opt-out is sixty days for everybody.
You're already opt out.
Right, but it's a sixty day within that.
Right.
Okay, right.
Late October.
Okay, do you have a question? Yeah, do you have a contact information you can share us in case? Mine? Yeah. Uh, sure, um.
I'm going to share yours.
Sure, please, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was on this one, I think. It was in this one. I thought it was from the show. I am wrong, just kidding.
Yeah, I, I wanted to, I don't care.
There might be a reason for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, this document, Rich. You read through it. April, um, sent a note to us, April gave us some information in June, and then I followed up with Claire this week. Okay.
When we get to that portion.
Yeah.
I would be very.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Well, let's move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes, there are minutes are placed in front of you. Are there any?
I make motion to approve the minutes from, um, our township. White Lake Library Board of Trustees meeting that was on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
That's actually. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The eyes have it. Thank you, and next, uh. We have the. Um, officers, we've off the reports, uh, obviously no president's report. Uh, vice president's report, I have none. Secretaries' report.
No work.
And on to treasurer's report.
Um. And hopefully, everybody got a chance to look at, um. This month's expenses. Um, you know, we've got a little bit of business to do with CDs, and we'll do that in the finance committee, um. You know, overall, I think that April, we're doing really, really well for the year, yeah, very, very, very happy that, you know, things are going as planned, it's great. Um, so if anybody, if, if. Hopefully, everybody's looked at this, you know, we're really right on target to where we need to be for this time of year, um, going into the fourth quarter. Um, and if there's no questions, then, um. I'm going to, um, present it, um, August financials. And, um, and the bills, and I motion to accept the bills for payment as presented.
Any discussion? Oh, is there a second for that?
I will second that.
Then a discussion. Not, then all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
None, so the eyes have it.
Thank you.
The library directors' report.
Well, thank you for receiving, one was my fire department, and one was for a visit to the new home. Um, assisted living car, but that I went to, so that was kind of nice to see. Busy month, as you can see from the directors' report, um. Obviously, driver window opened, and so that was very exciting.
But we've only had nine people.
But we will get that. Um, we, I will be adding, right now, obviously, we took curbside out of our statistics, but we will add in the window officially.
I'm sure this winter it'll be much better.
Yeah, you could, you could actually kind of merge them.
Or we won't have any more.
Yeah, but, but he's got a point.
Yeah. Report the curbside up till, and then report the, you know, till it's.
Right.
As a basis for comparison.
I think that would be great, because that tells us really what, you know, if, is it really being used, right, it, it compared to curbside.
Okay, so we attended, yep, we attended, so we attended White, uh, but, okay, I'm going to talk today at some point. Uh, we started our, our bookish banter video, which will have, um. You know, we have different ideas, we will have that, we may have something like we showed you earlier. Uh, we also partnered again with Lakeland High School Palm, uh, squad to do their mom pickup. We strategically did that during the book sales, that we could funnel people into the book sale, and we're getting their moms.
Very, very good.
Win-win. We posted the state fire marshal meeting here yesterday, so.
Nice.
Fire marshals from around the state came here, and that was at a request from our chief.
And we had enough room for it.
Yeah, I mean, thinking there was, you know, uh-oh. Came for storytime and went, oh, I'm not sure we've got storytime, we all want things on fire.
Well, Chris, it was nothing, because the fire department sent us. So that was good, uh, and then we pulled in Daughters of the American Revolution, local chapter, to do our Constitution Day display.
Very nice.
Finally, I was really excited to get that going, and hoping that they can also help me out with the Missing Man display is another.
That's a good one.
So, uh, Gwen joined me at the Chamber Nonprofit Network Coffee prohibitions, uh, that was at Hospitality House.
Which was fabulous.
Which was wonderful, had a wonderful time there. And Karen, uh, and I discussed public librarianship in contentious times webinar, which if you, if you didn't get a chance to see that, was, was very well done. We did some of it forward.
Yes.
Yeah, you did.
Get a chance to watch it, especially the, the afternoon portion with the, um, attorney lending off, so that was really good. Uh, Kathy and Heather were the ones that attended the fire department open house, and they did a fabulous job. There's a picture towards the end of my report that shows, um, their table and our new. Uh, tablecloth covers in the back, you can see that.
Hey, that looks fabulous.
That is our official blue, that is from our, um. Whatever you want to call it, our plan, they had all the.
Okay, so our logo looks.
Yes, they were, you know, exact color match, and, and that's our library blue, so.
Nice.
Very crispy of three of those.
I still really think we need to license plate.
Um, Heather made some, uh, changes to her communications and marketing updates, so she's now reporting full month stats on social, you know, on social media, so she's changed. She's also attended quite a few webinars, she's really good at doing that, and learning new things. Um, I've been out and about as well, again, the new hope, uh, attended SASAR, this farm festival table hosting. Um, Chamber DSLRT. I did not get a chance to go to the State of the Lakes yesterday, so me and one for me, uh, so that was real good, had some good speakers.
Um, the DSLRT meeting, so you did go to that?
I did.
Um, can we have? Um, can we have this, um, the Excel just statistics, yes, please.
This is.
Yeah, it's very, okay. Okay, when the stats come out, they're very informative.
Yep.
Thank you.
And thank you webinars for myself, I was able to fit in. Uh, we had one of the upper windows, or the roof, had a leak that we got repaired. We also found a nick in, um, two nicks in our sprinkler line. Um, that's completely right over there by the sidewalk, sprinkler line was actually a little close to the top, which was a little odd. But something nicked it, I don't know if it would have been the lawnmower, or it was just. I, I don't know, but, um, one of our landscaper volunteers found it. It's a little soggy, luckily, they had been off, they weren't, we weren't running it because we'd had so much water. Sitting there. And so that was, that was fine, and we also had our fire system inspection. And that went well, too. Uh, friends are up to some great work, they had, they had a record breaker for their book sale. They have been meeting with other friends groups, they need to know what they're doing, if you've noticed in our front lobby, they now have a brand.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, displayed, but it tells everything all at once, exactly what they have going on. And that they will change that out, and a big thank you to Emily for helping them with that. She spent a lot of time getting that just right for them, so that fit just well. They're gonna be attending a lot of great events, uh, I know that they helped us out at this farm. They, uh, will also be doing Trump or Treat, I'm gonna be joining them for that, actually, um. I was actually making. Sure to show off to see that, and looking for helpers for tree lighting, so, um, I'll get to that in just a second. So they're always up. Uh, Amy also attended Oakland County Literacy, uh, had an open house for their new offices in Pontiac, and so we got some great information from them. I thank her for doing that.
Where are they located now, Amy?
The, the big parking garage, just off Woodward, it was big, it's actually originally the whole building.
Oh, where the Phoenix Center. Where, where the Phoenix Center was? Right downtown?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Cause Oakland County Literacy used to be in the Oakland Schools building, that's why I'm asking. Great.
Uh, we're getting lots of tech training going, uh, Maria also visited the Commerce Library to visit their maker space and get ideas for our ideal app. And, uh, Maria Faith and I worked together to purchase our new three D printer, as well as some three D pens. And we are now working on procedures to get that up and out to the public. Youth staff, um, they had record numbers for their I Spy prize machine. They kicked off their fall session of programs and they're going great, especially the crochet club.
Oh, good, okay, I was in here for tail wagging tour, it was packed.
Yeah, very.
And there were kids standing outside the garage looking in, watching.
It's, it's amazing, um, Harry Potter escape room was also very full. So they're having a great time, uh, we did receive our grant, so we purchased our twenty launch pads, so those are gonna be coming out soon. Getting those processed, Emily attended youth services advisory council meeting, so I'm very happy to have her getting out there. Um, and getting involved and learning things, just doing a fabulous job.
She and Mallory are doing a fabulous job.
That will team back.
Yeah, so they're fabulous.
And Mallory's one, I just actually saw her today putting more dots on our next step readers to help parents, uh, find that perfectly. Perfect level of book. Landscapers are continuing to read and trim, they're doing a great job. Yeah, big kudos, we got some anniversaries, Kristen, Jiska, one of ourselves, near seven years helping us out. And Renee's been here for two years, uh, and again, a big thank you to Kathy and Heather for getting out to that great apartment open house. And lastly, again, the, our three D printer, after much, much research, is the bamboo lab X one carbon combo. Uh, three, three D, three doodler, if I can say that, printing pens. And we are renewing three D scanners and sublimation printer. Um, we're hoping to look at a, a nice three D scanner, so that, say, if someone comes in, they have maybe a piece that came off of. Something, some appliance that they have, you know, maybe we can print it for them by that. We scan it and then we can print it, so that's another way that we can be able to.
Nice.
Yeah, any question with stats, I thought they were looking pretty good, some information is still off. Again, it does include the auto renewal, it's like still up, which is great to me.
I just think that Rich had a great idea that, um, what you had done for curbside, just, you know, moves over to, um. So we don't lose track of that.
I have a question, so there were nine users on Drive Up, and under circulation services, you said. But only sometimes make an appointment, how are the patrons to know they're supposed to make an appointment, cause I'm on the website. And I see nothing that says Drive Up Window, make an appointment.
No, it was, at one point, it was on there.
Page, should, we have its own page.
But it should be, as it's written new, it should be right in up front and center.
It should make an appointment.
Yeah, because I'm one of those nine people, and I didn't know.
You didn't know to make an appointment.
You just press the doorbell.
I pressed the doorbell, I made that poor woman do a whole lot of work for me, too, so I would have made an appointment if I. And then, you know, making an appointment, I mean, I'm not so sure I would have been able to make it for when they told me my appointment is available, too. So that's another.
But I think you'd call an hour in advance, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, we say appointment, but it is kind of a little bit more like, just call ahead.
Oh, okay.
Get the item to the bathroom for you.
Okay, but I think that needs to be really front and center, because it, there was information about it, but that was. Before it was up and running.
Maybe we could have like a testimonial of somebody that called ahead. And asked for, you know, a variety of, of things, and, you know, um. I called an hour ahead, I asked five questions, and, uh, I pulled up an hour later, and.
A stand box.
Yeah, and, and a timeframe would be nice, because, okay, an hour. But.
I think the board announcement, um, moved the window announcement on website.
Uh, because it was on there, it was right on the front, yeah. Okay, thank you.
But where did it move it to, cause shouldn't it have just been bumped down? Shouldn't have been moved off, it should have bumped down.
That's one of the challenges with. Websites.
But it should, there should be like postings within the library about it and stuff, too, you know, have you used the Drive Up Window? Here's the. Procedure and stuff, but, you know, did you realize the Drive Up Window is open?
Yeah, I'm gonna check, I, I also wanna check on that, that it isn't showing on mobile, the way it showed. That was, that should have been moved, should have captured it all.
Yeah.
Quite a bit different, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually rotated.
Did, did I get a different, do I get a different?
It's a little bit wider.
I still get all the same stuff I had going in the other direction. Wider, but it's the same stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Alright, I'm sorry, it's, you know, if we want people to be using it, we need to make sure that people. Know the procedure and that it's in a lot of place, I think especially in the children's section. Because I think there's a lot of parents who would use it. But, especially as the weird weather starts heading in.
That's very true.
Yeah, I just clicked through the Google slide. On the front page, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, I was watching it, I went, I went to forty-five slides, and that's an awful lot of slides.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I think with stats.
No, great.
Okay, so we're on to committee reports. We have a finance committee.
Okay, um. This approved vendors list approved February, I thought it was made change since, since February.
That's the main one, when we do the whole thing, it's part of the whole policy, so it does, that's why it's not.
This should be updated every, this should have an updated date every time we make a change to it. We originally put this together in February, so it, it, it looks like this is really the, the first time we've made a change, we've made multiple changes to this. So each time that this is, this, it says approved, but we should say update, we, we should have a list of what, when these updates happened.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I would prefer, yeah, I would really greatly appreciate, cause I'm like, we've definitely made changes here, we've added things. And, and, you know, we don't really have track of this here, and it, it wouldn't hurt.
Just for burdening.
Yeah, right, thank you. So this month, though, we do have one change. And, um, it's for GOCO, um, and it's this payroll, um, benefit software, and it needs to be, um, updated. We had it, um, the maximum amount is three fifty, and it needs to be updated to four fifty. So it doesn't get kicked back, and the other, I think, was the other one GOCO that we were writing a check for?
No, it's, that's basic.
Basic, for that fifty-one dollars. Okay. Okay, so we're still signing that check, right, so, um, I, um, I, if anybody has any questions, it just, you know, we just had an increase. So we need to make sure that it's, I think it's only like, is it four hundred? Yeah, but we wanted to make sure it was enough.
It has to do with how many staff you have.
Right.
So, you know, increases or decreases, it can go a little awkward.
So, um, so there's that change, and there's a change pending. That is waiting on specific details from basic, but.
It's been pending for months.
Is, is it already, is it within what we've already approved?
Yes, that's, that's when I, when you made that change, that was so that I could go ahead and.
Right, so that's, so those kind of things would be really handy to have here, for, for, for historical purposes, we, we don't have that kind of memory. So, so I, I have, I'm making a motion to, um, update the addenda one of the financial policy. To increase the GOCO, um, monthly maximum amount from three fifty to four fifty, effective immediately.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, um, I, we've been staying ahead of, um, our CD maturity. Um, in, in that vein, I want to talk about the, um, the CDs that are gonna come. Um, that are gonna mature in November, and if you look at the second page of our, um. Our finances, that, there's the balance sheet, and then there's a large sheet right after that, that's the, um, our investment summary. So, we're going to move two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per our motions of, from last year. Um, last month, and Rich is gonna make that transaction for us, um, at the beginning of next week. So Rich has agreed that to do that in my absence, thank you, Rich. Um, and I'm gonna, I'll send Rich all the details, so he has it to take with him to the bank. Um, and then for November, we have two CDs that are maturing, and one is at Genesis, um, and it's a hundred and five. Thousand twenty-three dollars and seven, um. Um, seventy-four cents, um, actually, it's a hundred and six, four seventy-six, okay, plus whatever the interest is gonna be. Um, that one, um, I'll make a motion, I just, I'll talk about it for a second, but I'm gonna make a motion to renew that one. And the other one is Lake, Lake Michigan, um, it is a hundred thousand dollar CD that, um, it's. It matures on eleven four, and, um. Um, April and I have discussed what we think we need to hap, have, needs to happen, and we will move that hundred thousand dollars. To, um, the, to Flagstar, um, and by doing that. We'll move, we, with what we have in the bank today, moving that two hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, for October and another hundred thousand. That should get us through the end of the year, with also, we'll receive some tax money, um, we'll, uh, receive a small amount in, um, November. I, I, it's gonna be maybe fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, then we'll receive more in December, so we should have plenty to cover. And we're trying to keep as much in CDs as possible, because the CD interest rates are so great right now, so. Um, so if everybody's okay, I'll make a motion, unless anybody has any questions, so you can have questions after I make.
So which ones are, um, expiring in this, we talked about the seven months, um.
There's a, there's a seven month, so I make a motion.
That, the seven month in Genesis, and that's, we already have a motion.
No.
Seven month.
Yes, that one was done last month, Rich, okay, so we're looking at November maturities. So I make the. Um, us to move the Lake Michigan Credit Union seven month CD that expires on eleven four. To Flagstar checking. That's my first motion.
I'll second that.
I, and I, and I have to, I have to correct myself.
Okay.
It's a hundred thousand dollars plus interest. Okay, Jake.
So the way I'm, the way I've got it written, is that motion to move one hundred thousand dollars plus interest from Lake Michigan Credit Union seven month CD. That expires November fourth to Flagstar check.
Correct.
And that's, that you have the.
I seconded that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any discussion on that? And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you, my second motion. I motion to renew. Um, the hundred and six thousand dollar CD from Genesis Credit Union, which expires on eleven five. Plus earned interest. And we'll renew that, and, and the renewal will be at Genesis. I don't, I don't know what the rates will be at that time, but right now they're five point two.
So motion to renew one hundred and six thousand plus interest CD from Genesis Credit Union expiring.
Eleven five.
November fifth.
For term, bud.
And, um, and actually, um. That's the tough one. All I wanna say this, because I'd like to renew it, their seven month right now is five point two, I don't know what their twelve, their twelve month isn't as good. So I would like to renew it at Genesis. For, um, seven or twelve months, depending on the best interest rate. Both would be viable for us. I, but I don't know if I have that, I have the option to.
Yep.
To do that, Rich, okay.
Basically, the, you're looking for the best interest rate, correct?
Yeah, so how do I wanna say this, I'm gonna make a motion.
You wanna say to renew for at least seven months and no more than twelve months.
I wanna look at something really.
Now, she's gonna tell you that the six month is even better, so hang on.
Well, you know, I know that that's not the case, but then I think sometime, Genesis has a tendency to go to thirteen months. That's my concern, um, is that Genesis does have a tendency to go to do, um. Hang on. I need to look at their rate really quick.
It's a month away, so a lot can change.
And a lot could change, so, but I wanna be able to, um. Make that decision, you know, to, for the best rate, but I don't wanna say twelve months, and they don't do a twelve month rate right now, see, they do thirteen percent. Okay.
Thirteen percent, that's a great.
I'm sorry, they do thirteen months, I, yeah, I wish they did thirteen percent, so right now, actually, even though their, their board said today, five point two. Um, as of this evening, they're five point one, and their thirteen month is four point nine five.
So, um, you want to say for at least six months and, and, uh, no, and.
No more than.
More than fifteen months?
Yes, okay, alright, so, um, let me see how I wanna say this, um. Jake. So I'm gonna make a motion to move the value. Of the Genesis CD. Which expires on eleven five. Plus to earn interest. Into a new Genesis CD. Of no less than six months. Or more than fifteen. Dependent on interest rate.
So here's how I, the motion to move value of Genesis Credit Union CD expired eleven five plus earned interest. Into new Genesis Credit Union CD at a term no less than six months and not to exceed fifteen months depending on interest.
That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll oppose, the eyes have it.
Thank you. And that's it for finance committee.
Motion to move one hundred thousand dollars plus interest from Lake Michigan Credit Union seven month CD that expires eleven four to Flagstar checking. Made by Gwen on the news, seconded by.
Yeah, eleven, eleven four one is a hundred thousand dollar, the the Lake Michigan one is a hundred thousand dollars that we're moving to Flagstar.
But the.
Plus interest.
Yeah, okay, oh, that was the first one.
That's the first one.
Yeah, okay. Look at the first one.
And the hundred and six.
Gotta read it.
Okay.
You're in, you're in company, good bad. Maybe also in finance.
Nope, that's it for finance, thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to the. Moving around, hold on a second.
People, thank you for making this so I can read it. When we were having our meeting and I had that on my phone, and I would have found the iPad, I'm like, nice. Yeah.
Please give me a sec, Karen. Flipping back between documents, I. There we are, upside down. Strategic planning committee.
Okay, so. Planning committee met again, I'm going to discuss that under old business. But basically, in the meantime, I'm waiting on some edits based on. What we just, the strategic planning committee discussed. So that the plan and the dashboard can be finalized. And then once that is finalized, they'll send us a draft and I'll send that to the committee members to review. And we're getting that much closer to having. That's just the update for the strategic planning.
Do that in a moment and policy committee.
So policy committee did meet. And we were kind of in the midst of reviewing, I just need the, we're gonna do the second draft of that. Campaign petitioning and similar activities, which as well as vacancies, new hires and. So we wanted to go for a second edit on that, but that's coming soon and again will be added to our list to some to nature. Anything from policy committee you wanna have?
Are we gonna have the board review it before we send it to the attorney?
I thought it was supposed to be opposite.
I don't remember, that's why.
Yeah, we talked about the attorney first.
Okay, okay.
We didn't spend a lot of time browsing about. Better have something vetted in.
So. Okay, on to new business, nothing, no new business on the agendas or anything that, nothing needs to be added there, okay? On to old business. Strategic plan, goals and tactics.
Okay, so I sent you, again, this is what the committee got together and talked about. The first part of this we got together and talked about was with management, so management met with Kathy from strategic planning. To go over the potential of when we might work on these different tactics that are under the strategies under the goals. And looking at it, a lot of these either A were kind of already doing or working on, and so they became clear, well, you know, that would be year one. Or maybe there was a reason that, say, they're not breaking ground on the township yet, so that would probably be more. A second or a third year. But after talking with the committee members, we kind of realized that a lot of these, well, yes, you could put a year one, year two, year three. They're also yearly, you can think that, many things that we don't, we're not gonna put a stamp on and say, well, that's necessarily done. It's just we wanna continue to report because these are great goals that that we've all worked to come up with. And really good strategies and tactics. They're good, they're long lasting ones and they're ones that should be kept going. So I wanted to bring this to you, the committee wants to bring this to you to kind of look at this and say, does anything stand out at you as far as. Under the critical column, which is where we put things first, because obviously, critical meaning we're gonna address it this year. Or we're gonna address, it's not gonna be critical to year two or year three. I also added yearly next to that, so you can see that a lot of these will be done yearly, although maybe not addressed in this particular year. But they will going forward in year. We also, the committee also added. Under goal number four, strategy number three. Rich wants us to add, after we went through a nice long discussion. We thought, you know what, let's agree that we should add an attractive there that said, evaluate, update and potentially extend. This strategic plan for additional years, as you can see, it's right now a three year. But because you know that a lot of these tactics and strategies are are so good. Do we really wanna start the whole process over again?
In three years? No, we do not, for sure. No, cuz let, when's the last time, Rich, you guys did a strategic plan, it's been ten years, right?
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, in that kind of, and you know, building a lot. But, you know, but that's been four, you know, it's been four years since we did that.
Right.
But, yeah, I think the idea of, let's focus in the first three years, but the issues that we're facing are not. You know, the, the objectives and the goals, you know, we we think are are more durable than. A three year or probably even a five year. Perspective, yes, we need to be making some, you know, within three years, we should have made specific progress. Planned progress. But, you know, that we don't say that's gonna make us perfect there and. And then, and so in three years, if we, on the third year, if we evaluate that and say, yes. You know, the, what, where we need to go continues to be about the same. And and the objectives that we have continue to be about the same, then let's extend and let's, let's look out. What are the tactics that we need to do? Some of them will be continuation, some of them may be new. So that we have a plan that, you know, truly is a living plan there, and at some point. You know. As we would almost certainly have said, we need to take a hard step back and really go back after this. There, maybe that's after five years and maybe, maybe even after three. There, just, you know, lots of things can change in a short time. But I, you know, it's, it seems reasonable to expect that we could get more. Do set of what we've, what we squeezed here, there. There.
Starting off of this, it's, as a board, what, two things. What are your opinions on each of these? And also, what? You know, what you see as, you know, how, what, what do you wanna work on first? So that's what I'm kinda looking for is to to hear from you.
So the the committee came up with what they think year one, two and three of each of these goals, the strategies under each of these goals, right?
And then we brought that.
Okay. So, you know, one of the things I noticed that the plan is, is to work on all four goals. Starting year one.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, honestly, I look at it and I think it's, I don't have any issues with it, I think it's pretty great, but I also think it's a, it's. An awful big apple to start chewing on.
And it's. We don't have to eat the apple all at once.
Yeah.
So, yes, it's, it's, it's more like apple juice in that it'll stay in the fridge. Um, yeah, so. We agreed that it is a lot, but it isn't all being done at once and it's being done in little bits and pieces as it goes along. So each of these have even smaller bits and pieces that staff and everybody is working on.
Okay.
The other thing that I, I mean, I like what we, where we've gotten, so I think this gives a framework. For reporting. So it's, you know, that we've got. You know, I'm seeing your directors report. Here's the, here's the things that, here's, we're doing toward goal one, here's what we're doing toward goal. And then maybe there's some, and here's some things that we weren't, weren't on the plan, but you know, here's some operational. You know, necessities and issues that we're, we're facing, but I think all of that should tie in with, you know, where we're going.
For sure, I mean, anytime you do strategic goals like this, we need to have some measurements. We absolutely have to have some baselines and measurements to say that we actually really have been productive in in what's, what we're doing.
Or recognize if we're not.
For sure, absolutely.
What I'd like to see is to, to have you say, you know, yes, this looks good. Then I can then take it to full staff. And they can say, okay, this is what you want us to work on year one, and they can start developing their goals.
Did Jen participate in these meetings at all? I know that she's had some.
Not this last one, but all the rest.
Yeah, we sent her the stuff, so.
But for the most part, every meeting we had, all four of us were at, there were very few where one of us was missing at all, so.
Okay, so everybody's pretty much aligned.
Yeah, but she, she was not at the last one when we were looking at it, that is true.
I personally read through it and I don't, you know, I mean, we get into year one and we realize some things can't be done, I mean, it it it's not written in stone, we can't make some changes.
Absolutely.
So I I'm looking at this, I'm just thinking, it's a big apple, but I don't have any issues with it.
And also, if you have a strategic plan where everything can be done, you didn't look hard enough, there should be things that cannot be done.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, because you wanna look really big, and then you go, oh, that apple's too big.
Okay.
Stretchable, but also some things that are really stretchable.
Yes.
And a number of the things that are year, year one on this document, staff and I are already doing. So that's why it became clear that, wow, that might as well be. I'm already working on that.
Well, yeah, you know, I'm looking at your expand, the children's programs, right? You know, looking at what we're doing for budget for twenty twenty four, it's obvious that you were already working on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, some of the stuff I've already worked, I'm working into the twenty twenty four.
So to proceed. Do you need a, a direction from the board? To work from the, from this, as I'm looking at this as a, a draft, you want. Direction from the board with there, or do you wanna operate with the. A presumption, what, what, yeah, what would make you be most effective?
Yeah, I think as long as you see it as a living document. You know, I I definitely wanna get all six board members in, Jen, I really wanna hear from Jen, what she has to say about it. Her and I can have our own meeting with that, I don't think there's anything that there needs to be any sort of motion made. But, because I will be bringing back the dashboard.
Okay.
And the official plans, I think once you see that, I mean, the plan itself, you've approved. So that's not the problem. But if there's anything maybe by the end of next month, by the end of next October. Maybe we'll look at that, the dra- the dashboard and all that, we can kind of say, okay. We're gonna move forward. You may wanna think about what it is as a board that you want to work on, you know, there's, there's things for you too. So members say, yeah, you know, we wanna do this year one or, but again, I kinda looked at it and said, we are kind of already doing some of this stuff.
Yeah, cuz there's definitely things that I wanna do on the fina- um, you know, on the financial side, right? So that I would like to do in year one, that. Oh, and yeah, it actually didn't get, it didn't get in, in, put in just this goal three, strategy one. Even though I had asked our strategic planning people to put that in there, they disagreed with me and did not include that. Where I think that it's really important that we establish a, a four oh one, I think it's a. Where, where we're on, our own charity. And and I had, you know, a big discussion with. The lady in, Elaine in Minnesota, is that her? Yeah, okay. Cuz their friends has a completely different entity than we are, than our friends are, right? And their friends was established. You know, eighty years ago, because of a huge endowment, because of a huge amount of money that was in flux from a very famous author. And it, they needed to actually manage an endowment. So their friends are actually, you know, paid employees there, right? And they manage all of that, where our friends is a completely different situation. And by not being our own four oh one, and I, and I'm gonna probably get the name wrong.
Five oh two three.
Thank you. By not doing that ourselves, we're missing out on grant opportunities. And we're missing out on people actually being able to, you know, put in their trusts and stuff that they're, that, that, you know, they can leave money to us. So as a charitable entity, and I think that it's not hard to do, and our lawyer specifically has worked on these before. And I think it's for our, in our best interest, and I asked specifically that it got put in here and it, and.
So the, the.
I had thought there was a prohibition against. Library with this charter.
I, I'll have to go back and read, but I don't think so.
I thought there was a, there was a clause in the original, you and I talked about it at the end of that one meeting.
The, the dissolution.
Right, the dissolution clause, yeah.
There, so.
Oh, what happens if, if we, if.
The library resolves.
Right.
The requirement of the five oh one, five oh one. I wanted to say three C, I knew that's wrong. Is that it has to go to another five oh one.
Right.
Yeah, and, and we cannot. Do that.
Well, I think it's something we need to talk to the lawyer about, because I actually think that we can do it, and I know other libraries that have done it, and I would hate for us to miss that opportunity.
So this, this plan does not disallow us from doing that, it allows us to pursue that. But it doesn't say that we've made a decision as a board that we will do that. And so, so the. I wasn't willing to support a. In- in- inclusion in the plan that we specifically would become.
Alright, well, I'll work with the lawyer on it, because I think it's really important that we capture as much funding as we possibly can.
But it's important, it's important that we capture funding and that we meet our due share of responsibility.
Oh, for sure.
And that, you know, we do the, the best for, for the library, I'm not. Gonna say that that's the, the only way to do it.
But the, the tactic can be explore the option, because.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Karen, cuz that is exactly what I planned to do.
Doesn't say that we are going to.
But it didn't, right, right, but it didn't get added to those tactics, and I specifically asked if that happened. And in, one of our strategic consultants felt like that that was too much of an ask.
No, well, it was, and it was also the, the membership of the.
Yeah, well.
Committee board also that.
I, I mean, I had this personal conversation with this person and she said, you have absolutely no business doing this.
Understood.
It was not a good conversation and I was very disappointed.
Well, unders- understood also.
She said, that's what your friends are for. But our friends are a different entity than the friends in, in, in Minnesota.
Have not no disagreement on that part. That's um, but that doesn't mean that. As a board, we um are all in agreement that we should take that specific step.
Okay, well, I will I'll investigate that with the lawyer, and that's will will be a tactic, as as Karen said, it it's exploration.
Yeah, exploration is different than saying we will.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, I don't have any problem with with how this is written up, but I think it's great.
Okay, anything else on strategic plan?
So you have what Dick brought, I have included the. Full finance. Um, plan here.
Yeah.
That was for your proposal, and then also. Gwen reached out to uh Claire Mamiello, who works at the library in Michigan, she's also she's a librarian and a lawyer.
I mean, we all, yeah, we all know Claire, right?
Yes, we do.
We know Claire, she's great.
Yes, I just keep wanting to go to things where she's at them.
Because she's a wealth of, and you know, you you did. You did go to her in June.
Yeah, I have gone to her in June, um. Looks like she provided a a candid more. I also printed out, so I printed out that string of emails, so you can see what um Gwen was asking her, and then you can see. Of a few of my answers that I get both Claire. Uh, and our attorney and. Response. On that. And then um you can see towards the end what Claire responded with.
Yeah, and I didn't understand when she said, and maybe I maybe I highlighted the wrong. Um. Cuz she said something up. At the end, cuz she just answered this afternoon, and I hadn't had a chance to read it until I got here. She said, the information on page thirty two of the document is that seems to be incorrect for purposes of tax capture. So I might have sent her the wrong part of that, but I read over the um, the um. The tax capture, you know, that um, so when. It was in two thousand and nineteen, the state legislature said um. That um libraries, their millage um is is meant to be for library services and not for corridor improvement. Authorities and we don't have to do anything unless we wanna participate, and then we opt in. However, reading that legislation, and then that's why I went back to Claire, I'm like, hmm. It lo- looks to me, and reading what the lawyer said, it looks to me like um our perpetual millage, which is from nineteen seventy five. Is it it technically? We could have, I mean, it goes both ways, we could have the argument that we um that. We don't have to do anything. Um, and the township could say, no, you're required to opt out, and that millage is like point. Two two, it's really, really, really small, but the rest of it, what they have in the TIF today is all of our millage, and that's not subject at all. It's not even valid that they would include that. We would have to, we'd have to technically opt in, so we'd have to decide what our advantages are to use to to use our millage. To fund the, to the, to fund the, the um. The corridor improvement authority. Which my personal take on it is, I believe. When we were building this library. We, the township came to us, we didn't plan on it. To put the water line in down to the senior community, the the senior housing down here. Which runs right past where the township plans to put their building, it was three hundred thousand dollars that we did not anticipate paying. And we were required to do that to finish the building, so there was three hundred thousand dollars worth of. Things that we wanted to do for the library, we could not do, because we had to come in under budget. So we've already contributed that money. To the corporate, to this corridor improvement authority. The other thing is, is that um. The current, the the former library we have. That was turned over to the township and um that. Um, building was paid for by library millage. And you know, it's about a million dollars. So we've already contributed that to the corridor. Those are two things that I feel like we've really contributed to. Um. And these are my personal opinions, and but I think that, you know, we've done our fair share um to this point, and I think our um. The people that vote for the millage for the library, they expect us to use up those services. You know, those library, our millage for library services and not for these kind of things, and that's specifically why the legislation came forward on this.
Yeah, that's that's my opinion as well, is that that library services needs to be protected, because there's a, there's a big. Risk of scope creep in this.
If you re- yeah, absolutely, and 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 you know, I'm not saying that I don't wanna see the improvement of the corridor, because it would be great, but we've already contributed. So um it'll be interesting to see if we have to formally um opt out of that nineteen seventy five knowledge.
But if I. I didn't notice any of the documents either, that there's any option to rescind. In there either, so once you're in, you're.
Right, I agree, right, I agree, Eric.
I have a personal problem with that.
Yeah.
Simply because if if for some reason inflation rises greater than what we expected to, or for some reason costs and everything else. Are are a lot lower than what they expect to, than one way or the other, the library gets hurt by that. Right.
Then we're, you know, even though that would bring it down, our cost would be, and when you look at year two. Starting with year two, you're talking about a salary, cuz you got a part, you start with your part time. And now you're talking.
Oh, yes.
One less person working now, two less people working in the library.
Right.
Yeah. Or or however you wanna look at that.
Yeah, if you wanna look at that way, you could say, well, who do you wanna let go here so the? Sidewalk can look better.
Right.
You know, and I don't agree.
Yeah, would it be nice to connect the the side, you know, just daily part, but it's but it's not a requirement, and it's not worth, you know, three quarters of a million dollars.
We already have the sidewalk going.
It's it's almost.
Yeah.
Extorted.
So from the um. First fact of, yeah, of 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 the of the library, you know, we do need to, our producer responsibility. Is to use the the funds for the purpose. Um, then with that said. And what, you know, and what we take into account what Dick said of, you can look at the. Um. The areas within the, within the plan. And um we have an opportunity to say, we would. So uh support. X. Um, toward. This specific item. Um, that would further the 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 goals of the library. Um. There, so and. So without having, you know, without having a, you know, specific example out of your uh having a. Um, read it, um, but I think it would be worth our our time to. To read that and to. Um, to say, you know, is there, is there anything in here that would fall within our our? Um. Areas of responsibility or our charter um as a library, is there anything in there? So we're doing. Um, you know, we've talked about need, you know, wanting to be out more out in the community, being um, you know, you know. You know, is there the programming opportunities within this, are there that? Uh, um, are there is? Um. In terms of where library services can be melded with. Um. The uh, the community, so if um. You know, if there were. You know. Um, library management, little free libraries uh out in the in the community um. There, that would be. Um, you know, within the district. There, would that be something that we would? You want to support now, I mean, little free libraries, we're not talking. Hundred thousand dollars a a year, you know, there, you know, uh, but I mean, it might. Uh, you know, there there might be some as- there might be some aspects of out there, so I wouldn't necessarily, you know. We, I'm I'm. I'm a skeptic, um, but I think it's worth agreeing with her.
Well, I think we shall, we we should read it and be aware of it, but I don't think that our, my personal opinion is is that the library millage isn't meant for infrastructure for the community. For the for the rest of the community.
Right.
Only thing I will that did come up under strategic planning is there were a number of people that did. Talk about connecting. Having the pathway.
Right.
Having that walkway.
But it's not worth three quarters of a million dol- dollars for for us.
But maybe that does go to what?
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe we don't participate in, but we. Um, you know, make the setting aside.
Money as we go along.
Or, yeah, to toward um. You know. Uh, improvement. Um.
But we hold that until they get to that point in their plan, because.
Yeah.
Handing it over now. Who knows when or if they get to certain parts of the plan, sort of like with our plan, when or if we get to everything in our plan.
Yeah, so there might be ways for us to participate. You know, without a definite.
I think I just. I just want you guys to, you know. Our attorney was very careful to make sure that you may wanna put something on record. Whatever your decision is.
Yes.
Regardless of what.
Yeah.
Dick was saying about. Oh, well, you don't have to.
No, technically, we don't have to do anything.
Right.
Technically, we do, if you read the legislation carefully. We have to formally opt in and send a letter to opt in. We technically don't have to do anything. We can take, we can take a vote.
We can just pocket veto it.
We can, yes, we and we could take a vote here what to do, and that would be our notification to the township.
Yeah, so she's definitely said.
We'd have to make it, we have to make a decision.
So.
We're not going to deny you. Not without Jen here.
Right.
And they haven't even finalized the TIF yet.
Right.
So we have sixty days from the time the TIF is approved from the township to. I.
Opt in?
Well. They'll let us probably opt in anytime we'd want. Um, but you know, um, the lawyer doesn't think that they really um. Can ask us for the nineteen seventy five millage um to opt in on that, but um to, you know, we might have to formally opt out of that. So that that might have to, that might have to happen, and we'd have to go back and talk to the lawyer further about that. So we have to make, you know, we'll have to make a decision as a board what we wanna do. What's your take, Jake?
I'm, to be honest, very undecided. I see strong arguments from both sides of. You know, the. Libraries contributed enough, and that's certainly a fair thing, but I'll be honest, like, I wasn't involved, you know, on the board, so I mean, I don't, you know, I don't have any emotional ties to that. But. You know, I I it's a very valid concern you raise, um. You know, thinking of the strategic plan, that was something that was brought up, you know, quite commonly was, it feels like there isn't enough cohesion in the White Lake community as it is. And this can be an opportunity to bridge some of those gaps that we've had to, as a library, deal with for a long time. You know, with with walkability and. Um, like the digital divide, you know, some folks not having access to certain things because of lack of internet access or other aspects, so. I don't, I'm really interested, I'm gonna definitely read on this and, you know, but I'm I'm very interested, so there there are votes that I have seen, because I just, I I. I just don't have enough information. I think the the hard part for me in the agreement to join the funding, if we could do that, is. We don't get a say in, other than. Speaking our mind about it, but we don't get a formal say in whether or not that money actually goes to Elizabeth Lake Road.
For sure.
And it could be ten, twelve, fifteen years before they got around to actually making that improvement that. Our patrons. And that's, if there were some sort of, obviously, there's no guarantees, things like this, but if there's some sort of guarantee, I'd feel better about potentially supporting it, but. It feels a little like a blank check.
Yeah, and the legislation's clear on why that they voted the way they did, if you read it.
And in what you said, Eric, I look at it in another way, you know, you're saying Elizabeth Lake. I'm on north of fifty nine, there is no way to get from north of fifty nine.
Right.
To this side, and this also is not planning for the people who live north of fifty nine.
Right.
I looked at, I have been studying all of this. Very closely, and I'm like.
No, no, yeah, no, not at all, yeah, um.
It's it's really specific and.
I mean, even when the library was where it was. There is written shoulder on Porter, and we would ride our bikes. From grass, you know, we'd come across grass, the lake can come down, and. It was bad enough then, but now with all the houses in there, that's impossible. I don't know how I let my children ride their bikes to the library.
Yeah.
But I did, but there were no houses up that way. So there wasn't, now. I I I physically tried to ride my bike here and couldn't make it. I got as far as the old library and went, I said, oh.
Right.
Also. Heroin coming down Porter. They're going fifty miles an hour, and there's a lot of cars.
Yeah, yeah.
Little moving point on this, but on page eleven is the map. And there's the the one piece of this border connects via the power line area back. Yeah, our line uh route to the fire that extends up that way, but does it go where? To the weather station? Is that where?
I don't think so.
The weather station is further along.
Further to the east.
Yeah.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So so what's that little block of red there at the north end of the power line segment? I tried to find it on a map.
Oh, is that the um? The um solar panel farm? But that doesn't look right either, because that's right next to um Indian Springs. It's right in front of Indian Springs.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, so I come up this way and across, nope, it's way down here still. What is?
The only thing I could think of was that was the weather station initially, but.
The weather station is is here. It's way up here in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, okay, that map.
Yeah, because this is White Lake Road up here.
Yeah, this is due west of Pontiac Lake.
Yeah, and east of.
And due east of um.
Of Grass Lake, so I can't, you know, northeast of Grass Lake, I can't tell what it is.
Is that one of the horse farms?
Yeah, it's it's a farm. It's hard to.
It's it's hard, yeah. Moose Grass Lake, can we come over this way?
Is this Tiger Dine?
Yes, that is, this one.
Um.
This one is right here.
So, yeah, so we're looking at this, the one on eleven, you can tell a little bit more, you can read a little bit more of that, the lake. I agree, right?
But it's due east of White, like, north end of White Lake.
So we're trying to figure out what that one.
That's right on.
It's right off Pontiac Lake Road. It's near, it's it's off Hitchcock, it looks to me like.
What? No, it goes over, oh, I see what you mean, yeah, that might be, is that?
Yeah, why do we have this little bit narrow bend? That's through.
Well, it probably has to be contiguous. So this connection of the of the power, that nothing's gonna happen on, is to pick up that piece.
But I, yeah, what's the road, what what's this road here?
No, this, this isn't a road, this is that power cut.
Oh, that's, okay.
So that's crosses.
Okay, got it.
But the power cut crosses over um. No, that can't be, cuz there's a power cut, it goes over, goes over um.
It it matches the map of the power cut perfectly.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, it matches the power cut perfectly, but I can't figure out.
Does it split? Cuz part of it goes over Tiger Dine, and that's not.
Oh, you know what it is? It is, according to this. It's Indian Springs.
No, Indian Springs is up here.
But but they said, he did say that they're they're including here in Valley Metro. Right?
No, it can't be Indian Springs, no, it cannot be.
Right, but I'm saying this is Indian.
No, it is the area. Right, Hitchcock.
Okay, well. All right, well, I do recommend everybody in the month, in the month of October, read this thoroughly.
I'm gonna find out what that spot is.
You know, um. I I, you know, I've said my piece on it. I just feel like that we've that we've thoroughly contributed to date. You know.
Yeah, and I think to the. I'd say that point, but also as a counterpoint to that, I think whether or not we. That's also almost irrelevant, simply because of the fact that I think we're protecting the funds of the patrons.
And that's, and and that's what we're obligated to do.
Right, yeah.
Are you interested in having an attorney come to a board meeting, or come be in June to to talk about it, so you can talk about it as a group together?
Hmm, um, I don't, I don't know, you can talk to Jen. Um, I don't, I don't know, you can talk to Jen about that, but you know, if any, if you reach out to the lawyer. I I just think that the board should be communicated and not just pick the pieces out of the email, but actually send the email like you did with this. Um, cuz I think it's important, you know, that's why I wanted, you know, I sent that to you and to Jen, cuz I wanted everybody to be on board with what Claire had to say back, right? Um, but um, you know, looking, and the lawyers came back to us before and said. You know, you're you're not obligated, and that's why this legislation was passed in two thousand nineteen, was libraries needed to be exempt from corridor improvement authorities.
Yeah.
Yeah, Anne said.
And we have such a small budget. You know, I make a smile. Yeah, you know, we don't have the kind of millage that they have, you you know, at Commerce and at Milford and at Huron and at Highland, we have a small budget, and we are very frugal with that money. And I just, I I hate to see us, you know, have to, ten years from now, pull services because we're paying for something like this.
It would be very.
Yeah, or next year, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, it's it's worrisome.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think the. Yeah, inflation is a.
Yeah, you made that comment, and I thought it was very valid.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, inflation's been. You know, less over the past little bit, but a couple of years of eighteen percent inflation would. Seriously impact.
Okay.
So any other, any other discussion on corridor improvement? If not, um, any other topics? No ones? Uh, then I would entertain a motion.
Um, I um, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Um, of the White Lake Township Board of Tr- Library Board of Trustees at eight thirty seven P M.
My second.
All in. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The ayes have it, we're adjourned at eight thirty.